Are actually kind of off the roadway. So very little that we do, but we do find them, you know, fairly often of places on the roadway where people have started dumping and kind of created a dump in places there's not one. And there's a range between five to 25 cubic yards that they preface. And it's, but this is a resolution in order to enter into an agreement with them to do this process. And it's not all our current business, it's new business, so I'm gonna have to ask if we can suspend the rules to vote on that side. That's it.
Yeah, I have a question for you. When you said we're gonna have to arrange, we're going to create a full site, do you mean by that? Because I know we do a lot of talking because of what we see on the side of them.
What we'll do is when we find these locations, you know, we get GPS coordinates and get some pictures, and then we'll send those to ADN that is made around, and they will approve or disapprove of the site. You know, yesterday, we agreed that it's a dump, you know, it's always done, it needs to be cleaned up.
And if they disapprove, then what we're gonna do?
Well, if it's on us, eventually we just have to throw it on our backlog list and gotta clean it up on the roadway. It just takes a little while for it, this is a way for us to get reimbursed for our efforts, which is, either way, we'll clean it up if it's on the roadway. Just, this is a method in order for us to offset some of the costs, first of all. Some great money. Thank you. Then, I don't know if there's any questions on that or anything on that. The last thing I had on my list is, we've gained the information on Federal Bridge Investment Program. We've been working with our several other counties, somewhere between 30 and 30 and 35 different counties, that have come together to the association and kind of formed a group, puts as a committee, in an attempt to decipher the federal infrastructure plan, in an attempt to get some bridge money, for bridge replacements. This program is formed of several different stages. The first one is a way to file for a planning grant. This planning grant is kind of step one, which is actually what we feel like is gonna be our best option to begin with. There's a planning grant phase. If you get that, you get awarded a planning grant, then you can move forward and start designing and putting plans together to apply for a bridge grant, to actually get these bridges replaced. It's a little bit limited. I've got a printout here in our agenda for today. After reviewing these and reviewing all these with the other counties, I feel like any county in Alabama right now, our best option or chance of getting any of this federal bridge grant money is to go in together, form a group, and apply for this planning grant first, with the anticipation it's gonna lead into the likelihood, the better chance that we actually get a bridge grant, to rebuild some bridges in the county. However, we would have to enter into an agreement with 30-plus other counties, just like you said, between 25 and 30 other counties, that verbally agreed to want to participate in this. And it could cost, or will cost us, somewhere between $1,300 and $1,600 to join this group with ADN as a consultant to do the planning for us. They would get together with every county, review every structure that we bring to them that we think fits the criteria, and they will develop a plan if we're awarded this planning grant for each bridge and each project. But, so I'm coming to you guys with the, trying to get some new business to see if we can move forward, and if you guys agree and are interested in it, do a resolution later in the next meeting and discuss it further there. But I've got a report here.
Question.
Yes, sir.
So for the planning grant, we're lumping with the other counties, we'll send them on stats, finish, or we're gonna have their own application?
No, actually, it would, we would continue with it if we get the planning grants and lump all of our bridges together in the county, and go in together as a group.
Is it one large grant to replace them all or how?
Yes, it would be. I think it's up to, I think there's a minimum in it, somewhere around like $150,000. And so us as a single county wouldn't, would never be able to get into that bracket. But if we grouped together with the other counties, we think we can get this big bridge grant.
And we'd be sharing the cost with the other county counties?
Yeah, for the, for this part. They are, if we're successful, you know, at that point, the planning grant would actually pay for the planning, putting together of the bridge application.
What was the ETA on, if we do this, the next meeting, what were they talking about? How long out would it be before you start finding out about awards and things like that in the next year or something like that?
No, it's got a pretty short timeframe. I think it's in the next few months. It's got a pretty short timeframe in order to get applications and all the planning grant. I don't actually have that date from it. I'll actually have to get back to it in a minute.
So Claire, did you, if you're not asking us to move on that?
No, no. Do you want to bring up your attention sign?
I think that's big enough, son. We need to look at it because if we go to, need to replace a bridge or two on our time, we wouldn't have the paving budget for a couple of years in the road.
Yeah, and we cannot, if the planning grant doesn't go through, then, you know, we're not under any obligation to spend any money beyond that in the planning grant application. You know, the maximum is $1,600 before they got figured out. More likely it's gonna be a lot less than that. But with the, the chance at hopefully a much larger bridge grant. If anything, in the end, if we don't get the planning grant, or if we don't get the bridge grant, we feel very confident about getting the planning grant, but if in the end, we don't qualify and they turn us down for the bridge grant, we will, actually already have all, like a set of bridges of our worst that need upgrading, already partially designed for the future. And over the next 10 to 15 years, we're gonna start running into a lot of bridges that are needs for bigger, drier.
That's something, if you would, let's, you know, when we come back to that next meeting, that's probably something we, and I know that's, shooting a shotgun blast, it's something, the way calls start, that's probably something we need to get us some potential calls. And we've looked at that years ago, and we've really been aggressive with our roads, and some of the bridge costs could eat up a couple of years of road paving money, so we need to kind of...
I get you some more detailed information on calls. The, that's really all I've got under new business. Under our current business, I have several items. First off, I wanted to kind of jump to the recommendation for the roadway mowing contract. And under that, you know, we advertised and opened bids for a supplemental mowing contract to do one pass on 382 some odd miles of paved roads. And the bid came back extremely high. The, it was more than four times what our original bid from last year was from the contractor that backed out once. And we currently don't have that money set, so I had an overall budget to do it. The bid came back at $138,000, which is, we had $70, $75 a mile was the old, was what we budgeted off of, was the original contract. And that came out to like $30,000 some odd thousand for that old contract. This one was at $138,000. It was a little bit out of our budget. However, our proposal is to move without forces and do this. And we've actually already begun, in four days, we've covered about a fifth of the county.
Question. Something that, you know, it sounds like the men of the right choice get kicked off in some of those areas. If I remember right, when we, when we changed the program to where we have it today, we were $125,000 a year, 100, it was somewhere in that range, between $125,000 and $140,000. It was a bunch of saving, it was outsourced, and some of that's through equipment. We disposed of some equipment, downsized some of that fleet. And I'm asking you to answer all of this, I'm kind of thinking out loud, but if, you know, if this is gonna be the way we're gonna go, those costs are incrementally go up because we're gonna have, we're gonna have to go back and get the old man vital, we're gonna get the equipment that we sold off, you know, so we go and equip to do it, so we might, we might even start looking at those costs side by side again to help us make, when it gets to that point, help us make a decision, all right? It's gonna cost us this much more if we continue to outsource it, appears where our actual cost is, if we keep it in, bring it back in the house, so we got both sides looking.
The original bid for the roadway to roadway mowing, back in September, this last September, 2022, it was like $85 a mile. And for a roadway to roadway, it was $15,400, what we ended up on that. If the same pricing kind of continues, we're looking somewhere between $200,000 and $150,000 to contract out. And that was just single pass, or one, one pass around the county of the roadway to roadway. And this is a secondary mowing that was just a single lane, 15-foot wide inside.
Mr. Chairman? I spoke to Claire last week about getting some pricing, some prices, and if we don't use our own forces, and that's why we're gonna do the surprises, but we got to look at it, get our own force and...
If we need additional personnel to do that as well?
Yes, this way. Looking at the cost of the contractors, it's one of the scotties, using our own forces and things like that. And if we had to buy a couple, two more tractors, which is what, $75 a mile, just with a tractor?
If you do the bad one, Bush Alex might with, with Gap Oso right now, about $24,000 and change or things, but...
There's a few other that'll just start back up. Those are one-time calls.
That's right.
For at least four or five years anyway.
Yeah, and potentially two additional employees.
But they need to be full-time, or just, could you use them part-time in the summer?
I feel like we can get away with part-time in the summer, which is, I brought some information to you here about that. If we, if we don't award the mowing contract for the single pass, I've actually wanted to present the option to, or to hire a part-time temporary.
One or two?
Well, I've got one full-time temporary that we already wanted to fill the budget with, where we had moved someone up from part-time to full-time already, so we already had that in the budget, and we wanted to refill that position. And then I brought a second one to you that is a temporary part-time.
This is, all of this we're talking about is what I'm talking about presenting us and kind of the way that we analyze, and I know what we gotta do, I'm not saying right now, because I know we're kind of in the tight of that first mowing, but, okay, what is the long-term cost on the tractor? Because it's, you know, yeah, my warranty's out in 24 months, now my, I paid for it, now my upkeep costs. I know we had seven tractors, seven motors, I think we cut three positions.
Well, we had an individual pass and lay and individual tire, and we elected not to replace them at that time because of the bid with the mowing counties.
So it was two, not three?
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew, I knew there was a lot of this, David Fox and...
That's great. If, some of the numbers that I had, just for six months of part-time temporary help, was $20,000 and change, almost $13,000.
We talked about leasing equipment, you're sort of not right.
I have done this for leasing.
So that's basically what you were saying, we need to do is look at leasing, I guess, purchasing, and outsourcing the contract, and be able to compare, is what you're asking for, right?
After that, I brought forward the application, or brought up last meeting, the Aqua Stormwater Grant, had a maximum of over $50,000 from ADN, and the, brought with it a resolution, excuse me, yeah, I want to request permission to apply for Stormwater Grant, I apologize. And in that, we will have to have a resolution agreement with them for matching funds. If we got $150,000 from them, max would be about $80,000, $84,000 on our part. But it's reimbursable, is what it is, it's, we can use our own forces to get that 35% match back, but we will probably have to initially put forth the $84,000. And then as we complete sites, and we turn in our time and material and labor and equipment for that, we get reimbursed for that, which typically is closer to about 50% of what it takes to do the project.
So it's a 50/50 current?
Well, it's a, no, it's a 65/35, but we only have to match 35%. And for our costs though, typically, we expend about 50% of what the material costs are, or half, excuse me, of the project is in equipment, labor. To match that 35%, it would be very easy to match. Particularly plus your 50% on what the materials are. Or almost equals, excuse me, to what the material costs are, that would get plus your 50%. It's a, but we would have to apply for it by June 15th in order to attempt to get a grant. But the money, what is eligible is our time to do the work, our materials, or our time and equipment to do the work for reimbursement. So we should be able to offset that, but we may have to initially pay the $84,000 upfront. I don't think I'm gonna have that many projects to get to $150,000 worth of grant money. You know, plus our $84,000 would put us to be like $234,000. And I don't think I can come up with $234,000 on eligible work to apply for it. I feel like more likely I have that. So I'll have those numbers for you later in the next meeting. Also, we mentioned the real program at the last meeting, and the county runoff service is not gonna service our area anymore, so we'll have to find a new provider for that if they would like to continue, if they can continue that. So I guess I wanted to ask if we want to continue that, it's gonna be about double the cost of what the previous provider was, to go with a new provider. I wanted to make sure, we wanted to continue with that before we change providers or turn to a new provider.
Is it for the dumpster, the real department, that we, does anybody get good enough?
Yes, that's great.
Did we ever get the one in Memphis?
No, we haven't made that far yet.
Okay.
Now, we found that the price is going up, so before I push any further with that, I wanted to make sure that we could still afford to continue, you know, with the new provider we're currently in.
I think it's something, we need to keep, keep the bare minimum going where it's at, because that's all the stuff that is now on the roadway that we picked up out of the trash. I mean, it's used way more, I think, than we thought it would be.
Personnel, I have personnel replaced. I wanted to hire a part-time operator to replace the one that moved up, Operator One. Mr. Anthony Johnson, I wanted to hire an Operator One, grade C, step one, the start date seems possible this week. Then, secondly, if we don't award the contract for the roadway mowing, then I have a part-time temporary here as well, to Operator One, grade C, step one as well, but he would be considered temporary for the six-month, you know, agreement, after six months, it has to be a year, like that.
What else, sir?
That's all I've got.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you.
So go ahead. Give me a status scale on 2254 and the...
Yes, the contractor has done a portion of the work. They came to us and for some reason needed to bounce around due to some equipment issues. So they came in and they did the widening on 2254, did the leveling surface on it. However, they ran out about 40 feet of their material that night. Took the plant, they shut down, and they fell off about maybe 10 tons short from completing the leveling surface. So it looks a little funny right now since they didn't quite complete it before they moved on to 2278, and they did the widening there. And then they were removed to 1143 and completed the widening layer, after which they've got to go to 1107 and complete about 30 tons with the work, about three or four hours. And they're gonna backtrack, they're gonna do the leveling, 1143, go back and do the leveling on 2278, and then start wearing surface, you know, at which time they'll go back to 2254, finish the 40, 50 feet area they did, and then put the wearing surface down, and then come back across. Sounds like a lot of moving to them, but that's what they, they...
Time for them to move it back there?
Probably, probably we can add.
And then the, the ride, the job will turn out, is that us or is that them?
That's a, they, excuse me. We'll do, we'll actually do a stub out on the wearing surface for 2254 and 2278, since it gets hot makes wearing surface. It'll get a stub out at each driveway, and they have to make sure that that's traded and laid it, so that the residents can get it out, pack it out, and they have to redress to the paper. Now, we will come back in afterwards and process the shoulder, and get it looking pretty, I guess, is maybe the term. They're just gonna dress back and make sure everything's serviceable by some, and then we'll do the shoulder work ourselves.
How far is the turnout?
Usually about two to three feet on the driveways.
What else?
That's all I've got.
Anybody else got anything else?
Ask them, you know, the only thing about them jumping around that has created some problems is these places they've just gone and widened and then left, they've not come back for a few weeks, they're trying to get down the driveway, they're burning the stuff out of the railboxes.
Yeah.
I agree. I was telling us, he's said some things.
We, we actually called MidSouth today and told them that whether he brings the asshole machinery back or not, he has to go back to 2278 and redress those driveways. They only dressed one side when they left, apparently, and then they picked up their equipment and moved. And so the other side, and they finished it, I mean, it was, it was 6:30 that night when they finished and picked up their equipment, so they, apparently, they did not redress the driveway on one side of that road, and we called them, they're supposed to be there tomorrow morning to redress those driveways. So I'm not sure everybody can get in that, because we had to go fix a couple ourselves today, tonight, like, or a few people could get in that. They should be there tomorrow.
Did you agree, did you think more on the speed signs, the speed sensor signs?
Yes, we did. Once, and I think I've taken an email, but it's got, it's like $2,600 for...
Is that the software to pull down from it, or is that different?
Yeah, it comes with one year of that, but this particular one I found, I don't think we'll need the additional software after that expires. They come to find out that is to be able to download remotely. Without the software, we could still download, we just have to drive to the sign and do it, which is, for us, is, you know, much better than spending an extra $500 a year when we're there, we'll be there at some point, when we download it to follow.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Anybody got any questions? Attorney, report out?
No.
Okay. Any commissioner have anything to report this time?
The session's over.
Thank you. Okay, no questions.
Okay, under my report, the Alabama Department of Transportation GIS grant, should I have moved them? I think that should have been moved in to be... Hold on, I'm sorry. We did that at the last meeting. I know we did, because I was sitting in court back in this city to get to our IDG. That should have come off you if you had done that. Okay, HVA C service bid, and then there's also number three on there is landscaping bid for the judicial complex. It's just time for us to update our HVA service bid. This would also do some changing, changing around of our buildings, because with the move into the new judicial complex, we won't be servicing some of the buildings once our people move out, like the DA's building, that'll be, that'll become the responsibility of the Board of Education when they move into that building. And this, it would be to add on those new buildings out there at the complex. So I do have a copy of that bid that we want to send out for that. This is like the filter changes and then the buyer checks of the equipment and everything. There's also the next item, there's a landscaping bid for the judicial complex. Mr. Davenport and Linda and myself went out to the judicial complex to take a look at all the mowing and landscaping upkeep that'll need to be done out in judicial complex. And I talked to Mr. Davenport about whether this is something that he thought he had time to add on to his plate. Also, we talked about possibly him hiring a part-time person to help with those duties, or just looking to out, sort of outsourcing that to bid the project out for all of that property out there. After talking to them, we would have to buy new motors and all kinds of things like this if we were to hire somebody else to do it. So we did and tried our best just to bid out that complex to do the landscaping mowing we've eaten all those things out there at that complex. So I'm working on getting some, we've never done a landscaping bid, so I'm working on getting some landscaping bids from some other counties to put together a bid, so that would, I'd like to move forward to the current business, but Mr. Davenport will probably have to work with us to do a couple of cuts and mowers out there until we can get something in place, but we are looking at possibly sending out bids for that work out there at that building, or that complex, not just building lots of buildings. Don't have any questions on those two items? I have two items that I need to add up under my report, I put two papers in front of you. The first is a letter for surplusing equipment at the... The first is a letter for surplusing equipment at the, the Sheriff's Department. This was some computers that used to be in vehicles, they became unusable. The, can't update the software at all, so they had to take them out, put new computers in. So we need to look at surplusing and then disposing of them as they can put up before we can dispose of them, y'all would have to approve and dispose of. They were bought with state grant funds, and so we really have to have them taken out of state or DECA listing before they can dispose of them properly and make sure there's not any information on there to, they won't be resold, in other words, because of what they are. But I do have that item, I have that letter in front of me. The other item is a budget revision request. The main reason for this, let me back up. In our budget, we have a fund, our jail court cost fund, this was passed back when we did the sales tax for the building of the jail. This is some court cost money that they added on. We have tried our best not really to use much of that money because the point of that was to help pay for the increase of personnel and cost just of running a larger, bigger jail that we have being built. But we have had to use some of it in the past, but it was not budgeted for any use this time. However, they have had a huge increase in medical and dental costs at the jail that we just were not prepared for this year. And so I'm asking for a, to suspend the rules to allow for a transfer to cover those costs that we've had there at the jail. For mostly medical and dental and the uniform cost for having to hire new people and just the uniforms that they've had to buy down at the jail, we need a way to offset those costs. So I do have that budget request, the revision request, that I would like to suspend the rules a bit on tonight. If you all have any questions on that, we're moving down to current business. I do not have any action on the jail, I'm under the Pike County Jail, but I will say, just for everybody to know, we are hoping to get keys to the facilities next Tuesday. Kind of on track, but maybe not exactly we're getting there, we've had a couple of little bumps, but nothing major. But either way, they are looking, the network's about all done in the building. The telecom system is a big thing, that'll have to be fully installed before anybody can start moving over there. It's looking like maybe by July the seventh, the telecom system will be installed and hopefully ready for a changeover for the offices that are going to be moving over there to facilities. So right now, we're kind of planning with all the offices that they could possibly start moving in that week, July the fourth, the weekend, and maybe become functional the next week. It's going to be up to them whether they can make it work or not with their schedule of moving over there, but it's going to be ready to go at this point, that's what we're thinking, by July the seventh. Have any questions on that?
Oh, we go be responsible for paying for the movement?
Yeah, what do, what do you mean?
Like the judicial department, they want to be with their office, DA's office.
They're all moving their own, own things, you know, we bought furniture for that facility, so the big furniture, if they have any extra furniture, files, computers, stuff like that, we felt like, first of all, we didn't really have it in the budget, second of all, we felt like with that kind of, those items, they're going to want to maintain control of that stuff to move it over to the facilities theirself. So they've all been working on ways to, to get those items moved over there. We are handling the move, the movement of some archives, some big books from the circuit clerk's office to everywhere that kind of need to be maintained and handled carefully because of the age of the books. Other than that, they're, they're going to be responsible for moving all their other records. Circuit clerk, I'm sure the Sheriff's Department is saying they have some evidence they have to maintain control of because they can't just, anybody can't just go move and touch that stuff. And so they're responsible, they're going to be responsible for moving those evidence items theirself to maintain control of. So they're, they're all working on, I talked to the DA's office, I've talked to Judge Kelly, they're all working on ways to get those items moved at this time. So that's all I have on that. Also, the current business, I have the Chamber of Commerce annual banquet sponsorship, this is something they only donated a thousand dollars a year in the past for. So that would be something we need to refer to them for their next annual conference, my annual banquet conference.
Yes, I see the R S B P day, what is the, when is that? Did they say? I, I saw that it said the R S B.
Oh, they, the actual invitations have not gone out yet, they just sent that over for, for me, they believe in the.
Right, I just want to know if you know the actual dates.
No, not off the top of my head. It said October the ninth of twenty twenty-three on the bottom of this sponsorship list.
That's the R S B?
October ninth, yeah.
That's, that's R S, R S B P day.
Oh, you want to know the actual date of the banquet, I don't know.
Okay.
It'll be probably a week or two after that, it sounds like might be the sixteenth or something, maybe using that from last year's date.
I thought it was two thousand.
It is, it's two thousand, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So.
What is the limit to four, what is the? I'm asking for that one.
You say.
They only have four, they have tables that, that can do the premiere, yeah, sponsorship. And that, that's what we've been doing the last few years, is table. So, they're vast, we do that again. Commission Office Personnel, we're still accepting applications for the part time position in our office. We'll look at starting interviews once, I believe the cutoff is the fourteenth, June the fourteenth at four o'clock. After that, we'll take a look at the applications and set up interviews. Hope to have somebody here to recommend the next commission meeting for that position. And get started.
Anything else? Do I got any questions or comments? The Pike County Commission work session will now come to a close and we will be convening at six P M for the regular meeting.